I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 meeting of the Newburyport School Committee to order. Can you stand for the [inaudible]. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is our section of public comment. Is there anybody who would like to ask for public? Oh, would you take attendance?
Mr. DeCanta?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Bennen?
Here.
Mr. Hockeiser?
Here.
Mr. Pinn?
Here.
Here.
Mayor's. Yes. Now is our moment of public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to share anything in the school committee? Seeing nobody and seeing not very big audience, why don't we move to our consent agenda? Do we have warrants?
Yes, we have four warrants this evening. It's a four-warrant night. Okay. The first warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $15,947.13 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the schools' account. There were no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent?
The next warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $70,057.85 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent?
Third warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $224,525.50 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent?
And the last warrant. I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $344,392.72 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also have minutes from our meeting of 8/19/2019. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do a second. Any discussion about the minutes? Modifications, changes? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One absent? I'm going to turn it over to Sean, who is going to turn it over to somebody else.
Well, we're pleased to announce our member, the new administrative team, Jamie Sokolowski, who'll be working still as a music teacher and also as an administrator at the Mullen. And at this time, I'd like to have Principal Rossi to come on up and introduce Jamie in her new role.
Yeah. Come on up.
So, a thank you again to the school committee for supporting this decision because it has already been amazing and Jamie's already been a huge asset. We had time together over the summer, along with Lisa and Nick, to do some planning as a whole building, as well as Jamie and I doing a lot of planning together over the summer. And we hit the ground running today with our first day with the staff. Staff is thrilled, especially having known Jamie and knowing Jamie as a person, very excited to have her on board. We have our second PD day tomorrow. We planned everything together. We're hitting the ground running and I am very appreciative. And Jamie is a go-getter and anything I'm like, can you help with this? It's like done in 10 minutes. So, I already feel like it's a hu- she's a huge asset and a huge resource. She's trauma and learning certified. She finished all of that. She's going to be doing social-emotional work with all of our students and staff and she's just, she's a great asset for us and we're really lucky to have her. So, yeah, so welcome Jamie as our .5 AP and our kids are still lucky to have her fourth and fifth grade music. She's got many talents, many talents.
Awesome. Jamie, do you have any words that you would like to say?
I'm just really grateful to still be working at the Mullen. I love the staff and I'm really excited for this opportunity, so thank you for helping this happen.
We had a lot of fun today and our first day with everybody back, so we had a good time.
All right. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Do I look super excited? I know. I'm trying to be, you know, calm, but I am super excited and we're a good team, so, you know. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good. Briefly to go over the city supplemental school budget proposal. We haven't established exactly, I guess.
This is the money that was additional from the state.
Before we go on, Chuck, can I just ask about who's going in to the NOCH Mullen to teach music? We were going to talk personnel at our last meeting, it just didn't happen, so.
I can tell you, the teacher we've hired, her name is Kathleen Shepherd. And actually, Jamie, before you go, you want, you know Kathleen really well, the person who's coming in to do your other .5. Do you want to just tell them a little bit about her background?
Oh, she's amazing.
Yeah.
So Kathy has, she approached me two years ago, just via email. She was new to the community and she just sent an email, like, hey, I play for the Boston Philharmonic. I'd like to volunteer. I'd like to be a part of the school. And so she came in and just helped me run the Mullen and NOCH orchestras. And so she would pull kids out while I was working with the full group. She would pull kids out and do smaller instruction. She started teaching some lessons after school, volunteering, and she's an amazing fit. She already knows the kids. She knows the program. When she started thinking about applying to the job last year, she would come into my chorus class and start just working with the kids in chorus and she's just, she's going to be incredible.
She worked the string camp this summer?
Yeah, she's been to string camp years in a row. She loves the Newburyport Public Schools and the kids are, the kids are going to love having her as a teacher in the school day, so.
So she's going to do orchestra and chorus?
And chorus, yeah. So she's taking over my NOCH position.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
What is my name? I didn't hear her name.
Sure. Her name is Kathleen Shepherd.
Thank you.
I didn't want to interrupt. The other piece too, Mr. Hockeiser, we would like to, I think something new, but our next school committee with the recognition is possibly have our new staff come in, recognize, and I think that would be really important for the community to get to know.
Agreed.
Yeah, so that's what we plan for the next one.
Great.
Thank you. All right. You're welcome. You did get in your packet supplemental budget proposal from the city, which apparently is something that reflects additional money that the city got from the state, from the schools. This is not, I don't believe that this is the allocation, the cuts that were made by the city council. That is according to Charles Tantar Council. Those are still being discussed.
So this is part of the?
This is part of the state.
The local aid that we got, that we got the email from?
Yes, I believe that's what it is.
I guess I have a question, but without Donna here, I don't know if it could be answered, but it is roughly $180,000 different than last year. The difference between fiscal 19 and chapter 70 and fiscal 20 is roughly 100 grand from the state, so.
Without the mayor being here, I don't have an answer.
At some point, Sean, could we, I mean, we got that email from the senator's office, but I don't know how that actually translated to the city office?
Cash.
And then translates to the supplemental budget?
Yeah.
If at some point.
That's the type of thing, would I come up and join in sometimes? The money part or not?
Sometimes.
They didn't know.
They didn't know about it? Well, they both got that email. Not only in Larry.
They didn't know how this number, how this number came to us.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Okay.
We asked the same thing from them.
Well, I will ask the mayor and have her staff as well prepare some sort of a report for it.
Yeah, her response was, you know, some of that, the way the math works isn't just here's some money.
Let's just get it explained.
Yeah.
I don't think that's unreasonable at all. The question.
Just one more question?
Sure.
You know, this thing of may vote on this extra cash, yeah, I'll take a dime if someone wants to give the school department a dime. How, is this really that sudden to come up? The Tuesday version of the agenda didn't have it and then the Friday one did? I mean, that's, and now we have to vote on it that quickly?
It hasn't, it has yet to be submitted to the city council, which it's supposed to be.
Right.
So I, this is, this is what I just heard about myself. I don't have.
Right. I'm wondering just how, you know, procedurally, how we, we got it after, we got the agenda on Tuesday. It wasn't on there. Friday, it's on there. Finance hasn't heard about it and the city council doesn't know.
The subcommittee, yeah.
What's that? Right, so are we doing this correct? And do we have to vote on it today for it to get done or does money go away or something? Kind of is that?
No, the money won't go away. The situation really is that our vote doesn't determine whether or not the city council is going to allocate the money to us. The city council likes to know that we have seen this and that we approve of it, but that vote is not a binding vote on that.
Okay. And I don't want to, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, but how was it not in the Tuesday memo, the Tuesday version of the agenda, but the Friday version it was in there? I mean, did it suddenly show up?
Yeah, well, it did to me. It did to all of us.
Who'd you get it from?
I got it from the mayor. I met with the mayor late last week and she handed it to me and I said, you know, we need to move to the school. So, yeah, I think that we can get some better explanations of it, but that is in front of us. I think the city council is going to try to move this at their next meeting. So it is up to you guys whether you want to vote to send the city council approval on our part for allocating the money or we're not. It's up to you.
What happens if it ends in a tie?
What happens if it ends in a tie?
Right, because Donna's not here.
Because the vote has taken the chair reserves' vote unless there's a tie and since there are five of this voting, there's no.
Oh, so Bruce doesn't get to vote unless, I mean, you, yeah, okay.
But if it ends in a tie, I think that sends the city council a message about how we feel about it.
I feel fine about getting a bunch of money, but I don't feel good about all of a sudden it wasn't in Tuesday's agenda and then Friday morning it was and that just seems weird.
Yeah.
If we don't vote on it, even, even if it's just a, you know, it's not binding for the city council, does that mean something, this can't come around in two weeks' time? And we vote on it then?
The city council will be voting on it before then, so that's my understanding.
If they voted it down, it could come back to us, right?
If they voted it down, it could come back to us, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So none of these increases have happened or are you, are you working on the, that it is going to happen? I mean, because school started today, so I mean, like, and these positions are already in place, are, you know, are we telling these people that they're getting bumped up or do they know it's a possibility they could get bumped up or?
This, for us, this, that, this funding would help us support these positions in our district right now. Yeah.
I think, I think that, I mean, I guess you're asking, Sean, are these positions starting tomorrow regardless of whether the money's been allocated? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, really, and like, I think you mentioned that we've already started doing some of this training for the world of difference, so I mean.
Correct.
So we haven't paid for any of that yet, but the training's already started?
We started that training, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And the three, you know, so if you look at this list, you've seen this list from the priority two. So this is the priority two, the student activities director, the increase in the reading, all of those things. This funding would assist us with our budget.
I would assume that the answer to the question is that if the city council does not vote for this, we're doing it, so we're on the hook. We're going to have to figure out how to pay for it.
Correct. That's kind of where we're at.
So these people are, like, this English teacher is coming in tomorrow as a full-time FTE?
So this, this, this .1 would be an increase to that, her schedule?
Yeah.
And so you'd probably, at the high school level, you'd probably be looking at increasing a class, like, second semester, like an elective.
And then now?
So right now, she's a .9. So the .1 increase would happen second semester.
So that student, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go through all these. That student activities coordinated to assist events, or is that just a stipend for?
That's a stipend, correct. That would be in the, you know, if this gets approved, then we would go through, working with the union to get it approved through this stipend process.
Because it's contractual.
Correct.
What's the move of the committee?
I don't mind voting for it. I just want to make a statement that I don't like a change like that, especially if it involves money and I'm on the finance and I haven't even heard about it.
Right.
I really don't want to do this, you know.
I think that, I think if your concern is about process, I think it's something we all share.
Okay.
I agree. It's not, you know, it ends up, it ends up in our packet Friday because it needed to get posted and the city council is probably going to vote on it. That's how it, that's literally what happened.
And it sounds like the sooner we have the money, the more secure these people can be.
Correct.
I move we forward this supplemental school budget proposal to the city council for approval.
Sir, a second? Second. Any additional discussion? I would ask Mrs. Kennedy to note as part of our discussion that we would really like a better and more transparent process for this kind of stuff. We appreciate it. Any additional discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess it's seconded there. Was it Sean or him?
Sean. Dave seconded it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, David.
Thank you, and I, we will let the city council know that we have passed this. Assistant superintendent report, I think.
Did you want to talk about opening day?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I checked it out for you. The opening day ceremony was today and I was there to speak to the teachers, sort of filling in for the mayor as well. And I wasn't able to stay for a lot of it after I spoke, but Sean was really well-received by the, by the staff who, Sean actually spent a few moments talking about how during his life he's been, he's been, people have said, you know, you look like an actor so-and-so and so he showed us pictures of the actors that people have hired.
I said that last.
And then, and then he ended up with the Hulk, so.
He did show the Hulk.
Yeah, he went, he went from Marky Mark to Matt Damon to the Hulk.
To the Hulk.
And that was very well received by the staff. I do want to say that, that in my conversations with the staff at the, sort of the reception breakfast, people were coming up to me, they were really happy to be back at work. The morale is, is very high. People are really enjoying working with the principals. They really see the principals as, as becoming the kind of instructional leaders. People just had so much to talk about and it was, it was really, it was a really good feeling. So, I don't know if you want to add, Steve, you were there. Who would you like to add?
Well, I'd like to maybe let the superintendent speak, but I'll add a few things. I thought that the significance of something that Mrs. Blank said, who's the Ask Me President, she made a nice, very nice speech talking about the significance of kindness and especially how teachers, the attention that a student and even fellow staff can give each other in terms of attention and acknowledgement, how uplifting and memorable that can be. And this shared kindness is really something that appears regularly, if not embedded, in all, all the members of our school community. And I think that was also echoed in the letter that you read at the end, which was from a former student, I believe a class somewhere in the 90s, who looked back at his student career and realized that there was this one particular instructor that he perhaps didn't appreciate as much as he should. So he sent that instructor a letter and detailed, like, three pages of detail about how he had not taken advantage of what was offered, but how that, that class, that teacher offered the students some safe harbor in terms of his own life, in terms of a difficult home life. And he also shared that today, or at the time that he wrote that letter, he'd become a leadership development instructor of all things at a large corporate facility and that he had, was employing a number of the skills that he learned from that teacher. And it was just really a special moment and I think you, superintendent, mentioned how things like that happen every day in the course of teachers working. So I thought that that was a really nice thing for everybody to hear. The other thing I thought was really good is how you kind of focused on the fact that we're not looking to jump into any more new initiatives, but rather build on the foundation we began last year. And I think you mentioned five areas and I, I don't have them memorized for rote, but I, I thought that was very good for people to hear that, that we're in a good spot and we're, and as, with your comments, Bruce, people really want to keep moving ahead in that direction. So I thought it was a very excellent first day and I too, last year, I didn't have a chance to attend Class Day, which I usually attend, and at the end of Class Day, which is in June, I usually go around and wish all the teachers a nice summer. So this year, I get to go around and see some of the teachers and wish them a good school year, so I, it was a very good event today.
So also another thing that happened at the event was that before we started, three different groups of students came up and did presentations, performances essentially. And they were just Irish dancing, the ukulele group sang two original songs that got a standing ovation from, from the teachers. It was just, it was great. It was really great. So and Sean, you can talk a little bit more maybe about the balance of the day.
Yeah, I mean, it was just a wonderful, it was a wonderful first day welcoming the teachers back and I just want to credit the students for really being part of our opening day ceremonies. We had the high school students really formulate a couple lines and, you know, clapping the teachers on as they were coming in. We had a high school band playing out front. We had drum majors in the hallway.
Jazzy.
Ja, yep. We, it was awesome. And, you know, and that's what we really just emphasized of collaborative leadership. You know, we're excited to utilize our teacher leadership capacity and all working together because this is exciting time in education, but also a challenging time. And, and we all got to rely on each other's skills and talents and come together, continue to work and to meet our students' needs, you know, for all students and families. And really just wanted to have a positive message today to the staff and, you know, I think we had some fun, where we had people laughing, but also we got, you know, we talked about some serious issues in the sense of some of the challenges that we face moving forward. Tying it really, everything back to the strategic plan, some of the big picture ideas in our strategic plan with reimagining teaching and learning and then also building upon, as Mr. Cole said, the initiatives that we started last year, you know, the, the skills-based instruction and some of our technology that, that we've been implementing. So I was just really pleased and I had the opportunity to go and meet with teachers for their building meetings. I attended all the buildings, got to say hi to a lot of our teachers and supported the principals in, in their faculty meetings. And I think our teachers are also excited to have tomorrow. We talked about, part of my entry plan was transitions and some feedback from parents and community members is, you know, the wish we had a little more time for the transitions from grade four to grade five, grade five to six, I'm sorry, three to four, five to six, and eight to nine. And I think tomorrow, the teachers have another full day, look at the class list to really understand where their students are coming in and it gives us another day of preparation. So on Thursday, the start of school, we should have a wonderful beginning and we'll look forward to it. That's it.
I guess we're ready to move to the assistant superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. One of the other things we did today was recognize our new faculty. And we had 13 new staff come aboard this summer and we had six members of our faculty move to new positions, which is really kind of exciting to, for them to have an opportunity to try something new. So I had the good fortune of spending two and a half days with our new staff last week during their orientation, got to spend some time with the mentors during their mentor training. We did a variety of exercises and a variety of PD with the new staff and I have to say, it was, it was really such a pleasure. I'm really thrilled with the staff that we've brought on board. In the exercises you do, you know, and you ask people to reflect a little bit and tell you a little bit about their past and what their hopes and dreams are for their future. And every one of, of our new hires was very insightful, very reflective. I think, I think we did a really nice job, so I'm looking forward to getting to know all of them better and they're very excited about being a part of the community. So between, you know, so we have the, the 13 new and then, you know, the additional six. So we have 19 teachers that we're working with this year in our mentoring program, either as a full mentoring or our staff that moves within the district. We do what we call mini mentoring. They're still assigned a mentor and they and their mentor determine what they need to help them transition into the new job.
Can you make examples of things that people are doing new? Obviously Jamie is one of them, but.
Oh, sure. I can, yes. We have a fifth grade teacher who has moved into an adjustment counselor's position from the Mullen. It was something she had done previous to being a classroom teacher.
Was that a new adjustment counselor position or did somebody leave?
It's a new, it is a.
Yes, we had someone leave.
We had someone leave. Okay. Yep. And then we have, we have a special ed teacher at the middle school who's become now the seventh grade math teacher. He was a co-teacher for math over the years and now, he is now the, the seventh grade math teacher. We had an English teacher move into the position of a reading specialist, a part-time reading specialist at the middle school. We had a special education teacher for specialized program move into a co-teaching position in the classroom. So those are the kind of, those are some of the moves that we had in district. So, yeah, we're excited. And then the other thing I was going to talk to you about briefly is the new evaluation platform that we're using in the district. And it is called Teach Point. Some of you might be familiar with that. And I'm just going to pass around while I'm talking some of the forms that we'll be using so that you can get an idea of what this looks like. So the evaluation system itself has not changed, just the platform we're using to manage the evaluation system is what's changed. So I'll send a couple of these this way. They're different forms and we'll pass those in that direction just so you can see. Our, the last system we used, as you know, was called IO Education or baseline edge when we first started working with it. And, and it was just not being supported the way that it was when we first started with the program. And so we've moved to Teach Point and it's an evaluation tracker, much like our other system was. But, you know, it was a transition over the summer. So we started midsummer with that transition and that involved, you know, moving all of our data into the system. So all personnel data needed to be moved into this system so that they could build our structure. And then from there. And then from there, we started creating the forms to use with the evaluation system. And after creating the forms, you had to build the plans. And there's a variety of plans, if you're familiar with the evaluation system. So, you know, there are, in our district, we have 15 different plans. So you attach all of the forms to the plans, and then, and then you embed the timeline that you've agreed upon with our teachers' union. And then you go through the process of connecting all the teachers and administrators to all of the plans, and then training administrators, and then administrators are now currently training the staff. And then we'll move to full implementation here within the first couple of weeks of school. Teachers will start their goal setting. And as we built these forms, you'll see as they're coming around, we tried to simplify and streamline our forms as much as we could. We're all so much more familiar with the evaluation system and what is most essential pieces of information, even on the forms. We color-coded, as you can see. So if you're the person being evaluated, all of your categories are in blue. And if you're the evaluator, all of your categories are in gray. So immediately, at a glance, you can see what areas you're responsible for on the form.
And this was rolled out today to the teachers?
Today and tomorrow. So depending on the school, it was up to the school as to whether they wanted to roll it out today or tomorrow, but within the first two days.
Any initial feedback?
Not yet. And I had no panicked emails, you know, yet. So I'm sure there'll be some glitches. We were learning along the way. I was working on building the forms and literally kind of reading the tutorial on how to do it and then doing it. So we'll have some mistakes, I'm sure, but we'll correct those early on. But having the opportunity to work on the backside of the program and dig in and build some forms and make some plans and connect things, it's a much more intuitive system than the one we had. And we have control of it in district, which I love. So if you want to make your forms different, you can. You're not waiting for them to build them in their database and then open them up to you. You can download any of your data at any time. You could, you really have control over the system. It feels a lot better, so.
Is there a built-in sort of benchmark for getting everybody together, saying, how is this working and what kind of changes should we have? Are you going to be soliciting that from your staff at a specific time? Like six months from now, let's take a look at it?
Yeah, and I don't even know that we'll wait the six months. But we definitely will be doing a check-in. We've had a lot of conversation with the teachers' union around this, and we're all going into it saying, you know, it's a, it's a new year. But it is, it's easy to use. I don't think, you know, once we work out the glitches, if we've made any mistakes in the forms or plans, you know, right now, what we've asked teachers to look for is to make sure they're attached to the correct plan, you know, because when you're attaching everybody, there's, there's going to be a margin of error there. And so make sure they're, they're on the right plan and that they don't see any errors in the forms that are connected to their plans. Because making those changes now before there's any data in these forms is easy. So we'd like to get that all straightened away, so that's.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you, you just said, you know, getting all of the fields ready before this data in them. If that had changed, though, is there a way to update field A to now show information different? Or do you kind of just start over again?
No, you can. No, you mean just change a field on a form?
This is a nerve question. I don't know if it's really applicable to the school committee, but so, but it's cool. So if you've got a whole year of data in there, and all of a sudden someone says, oh, this form's not right, and you edit it, will it remember that the old information was stored in the previous thing?
Yes, you can archive all the old information. So it would go into an archive, but it would be there available for you to use.
Okay.
So in the process of form design and/or implementation with the teachers, is this still very much a manual process, or is there stuff that's pre-populated for you to build upon?
Well, there's, in the forms themselves, we do have some fields that are going to pre-populate. So once a teacher decides on their goals, so their student learning goal and their professional practice goal, and once that's entered and approved, then it will pre-populate on all of the forms there forward. So, so that's, that's there. And once you've built your forms, your forms go into a library of forms. So, you know, if you need to make changes and whatnot, you're not always starting from scratch. You can pull from the library and make some of those changes. The hardest part is getting it up and running, as you know, with any system like this, just building it and getting it, getting it to fit the structure that you've designed for the school district. And then I think once we're up and running each year, it'll be tweaking that, you know, making small adjustments.
Is there any, any connectivity between your data sources and the system? For example, the DIBELS tests or the MCAS tests, or could that be directly uploaded into the system so that teachers don't have to do manual uploads of the data?
Well, right now, we're not, this is for their evaluation. So if they wanted to up, if they wanted to upload a piece of data like that as a piece of evidence, they could do that. But right now, this system doesn't hold all of our student data in it. So teachers oftentimes will upload data as a way to show their progress towards a goal. So they could do that. You can upload pretty much any document. It talks seamlessly to Google, and where we use Google as, you know, our primary platform now in the district, that's really nice. Our other system was not seamless in taking, you know, Google Docs or Google Sheets and getting them up into the system. And this is pretty seamless that way.
Just know that one of the big metrics for success of bringing in any kind of system of this nature is, or I shouldn't say metrics, one of the risks for success is when there's an awful lot of manual work required to get it started. And that can turn people up very quickly. So I was just wondering how much is done to ease that transition for, for the teachers?
Well, I think we did that. So that, that's why I wasn't here at the last school committee meeting, because we're kind of working around the clock, trying to get all that manual work done on the backside. So when it got rolled out to the teachers, that was finished, and they just had to look at their forms and make sure that everything was in place for them to start.
Yeah, it's very user-friendly.
Very user-friendly.
Any other questions? Great. Before I turn it over to the superintendent, I've been remiss. We do have somebody in the audience today, and I don't know, for those of you on the school committee who haven't met, Sheila Riordan Spalding, who is one of the three people running for three seats on the school committee. Sheila's.
The more Riordan's, the better.
Picture yourself today, Sheila.
We've got two Shans now, we're going to have two Riordan's, so.
Two Shans and two Riordan's.
I'm slowly taking over.
I've had, I liked the conversation with Sheila and handed a number of documents to her already. I think that she's going to meet with you. I've encouraged her to meet with each individual school committee member for a cup of tea and just sort of get their sense of what the experience has been and available to her for any questions that she has.
Have you told her about the dollar? Because it seems like we're almost going to be able to do this.
That's right. I hope so.
That doesn't count, it's only the main one.
Right, right. The dollar is that in the past.
Because I'm ready.
School committee member would throw a dollar on the table, and if the meeting ended before eight o'clock, you get to keep the dollar.
I'm going to leave it there, just in case, because I think you've kind of talked about some of this stuff.
It's tempting, man, I'm going to talk fast. Sean's, it's up to Sean now to do his report.
You have 45 minutes.
I know we can do this. We have, we do have an executive session this time.
That doesn't count, though, that's just.
That doesn't count. Thank you, Brian, that was very generous. He doesn't get a lot of dollars.
All right. Newburyport was founded in.
They chose Mount Rural.
Can't a guy earn a buck here?
Yeah, so we'll go through our superintendent's report, you know, opening day preparations. Teachers, we, as you talked about earlier, we welcomed them back and really credit Steve Burkholm and his crew, maintenance and the custodians, for all their hard work, getting the schools ready. They look beautiful. And also our tech department for, you know, getting the technology, the computers, the Chromebooks, ready to go. So it was really, I think, a collaborative effort to get our schools up and running for day one. As we were saying, tomorrow, the teachers are here. There is some orientation programs going on. The high school ambassadors will be working with the incoming freshmen tomorrow in the morning as a mentoring for the freshmen. There were some other, you know, the NOC locker day, where the sixth graders got to add, you know, bring stuffs to their lockers. And it was a nice family gathering where the sixth graders got to get into school a lot earlier and get their lockers squared away. We had the Mullen picnic, which is another opportunity for students and families. So the transitions for us, I think, are really important for success, especially for those students that are, you know, going from the third to the fourth grade, and as we said, the fifth to sixth, and then the eighth to ninth. So those big transitions, really focusing on the opening of day. Working with transportation, you know, we have, the bus routes are all squared away. And, you know, there are some tweaks, you know, depending on, you know, where the students are and, you know, where the pickups will be. That's always, you know, etched in stone every year, but it's very similar to last year. I plan on riding the bus if all goes well on Thursday and Friday this year. So I'll get to meet and greet some of the families out there in the morning and ride the bus with the students. So I think we're in good shape, you know, where we're going to talk about the sidewalk construction that we talked about. I joined Ed today, going to take a trip to see what sidewalks are in operational condition and what other sidewalks are under construction. We'll do that tomorrow, and if we need to have extra crossing guards and/or police details for some of those areas for our students for the next couple of days, that's something that we'll do. The grade, grade nine enrollment, you know, that was, I have some stats, updated stats. So the freshman class at this time is 216 students. We had 41 students coming into the district to attend grade nine. We had 14 students, eighth graders, who left the district to go to some other schools. I have this information for school committee, because I think at our last school committee, we asked, you know, who's coming in, who's coming back to district and who's leaving? So you can kind of get a sense of the students. I'm really excited. It's that Catch 22, where we have a lot of Newburyport families that are coming back to Newburyport, will be tending the high school. So this freshman class, at 216, is the largest class of the four. So we're excited about that. And that's why our school choice numbers in grade nine, we had that at 10. We have three on the waiting list, and we're going to maintain that, those three because of these high numbers for grade nine. Grade seven, we opened up eight seats. We have seven filled with one, you know, opening. And at grade 10, we opened up 10 seats, and we have eight students with two remaining seats open for our school choice. Schedules and distribution, you know, this is something, working with the extended leadership team and looking at summer schedules and, you know, and when those go out, and just try to probably develop a little bit more consistency for students and families. But as you can see, some of the staffing patterns do change over the summer. So we also got to be aware of that. So we did receive some input from parents regarding the scheduled distribution and when those can go out. So that's something we'll work with the extended leadership team going into next year to develop a little more consistency when those schedules go out. And hopefully, we can get, you know, the teachers, you know, to the classes a little bit earlier. But once again, I think, you know, you'd hate to have that go out early in the summer in June, and then you change teachers in August. So if, I think that that's something also that, you know, we'll take a look at, but that was just some feedback from some of the parents on the teacher scheduled distribution. Our ADL partnership update, you know, we had a meeting on June 3rd with many of the community stakeholders. Let me pass that out.
Guys, I think Brian did it.
Yeah.
I, Sean.
I shouldn't mind.
Oh, perfect.
I got it, I read it.
This is great. So this is really the development, and we talk about enhancing initiatives that we already have going. So spent a lot of time at the NOC in the high school, the middle school and the high school, developed student leadership and student leadership roles. And I think that this program, the ADL program, really taking a look at bullying, harassment, and civil rights from a student perspective with training from the ADL is a worthwhile program to really help enhance the cultures that we're already establishing at both the high school and the middle school. And to give our students an opportunity to take a leadership role regarding a lot of these sensitive issues. So this program is a program that I think will be worthwhile. We talked about this in June. Throughout the summer, we've been working with the ADL. They work with a lot of different schools utilizing this program, and it's a very successful program, as I said, really enhancing a lot of the work that we're doing with our students and student leadership and responsibility. So we're really excited about that opportunity. And then Nancy Lysick and I will continue looking at our later start and later start update, taking our transportation numbers right now, and then going back with Salter and working with Lee to really look at those numbers, to see if they are going to change. And I think we're in good shape with that, but we want to double-check, especially with transportation, as we develop our proposal regarding late start for the district. So we're still working on that and, you know, working with all the key stakeholders within the school to really have a, I think, a program or a proposal that I think, you know, we'll be able to hopefully get a lot of support behind from this community. So we're going to get our ducks in a row just a little bit more, and hopefully, we'll have something at our next school committee meeting, or at least a meeting after that, once we get some of those details ironed out. I think that's all I have for opening day in my superintendent's report. I'll show up if there's any other questions.
Yeah, if anybody has questions or comments.
Do you want this in a check or just actual?
I'd like to have a check.
Do we keep track of?
I just want to know if it's a pale.
You know, I, you know, I have to, I, Brian, I actually have to check the chart to see if I can take that down, now that I think about it.
As long as it's below 50.
I was going to say, looking at the sheet that you handed out with, you know, kids who came in and kids who decided not to go, do we keep track of all the kids, like, who are not transitioning, like where they're going in the city? You know what I mean? Like, there could be a fourth grader going to.
Yes, we do.
Like, do we?
To the private schools or to the, yes, we do.
Do we keep track of that, like where kids are going? I was just curious.
We do.
That's bad, though, only eight kids didn't go to NHS for high school.
What is that?
Well, private school kids, only eight kids went to private school. That's not bad.
Oh, you mean like, not kind of, what are your kids?
Yeah, that's technically public, right? So.
Well, I think, you know, and Mr. Riordan, I think you bring up a great point. It's having, it's looking at these data points, and if we see a bubble within the system, if there's one grade where the students are leaving and then, you know, coming back, I think that that's, that gives us a focus area on.
Or if you all of a sudden see a bunch of kids going to one school all of a sudden, that's worth, you know, looking into and trying to figure out why.
Exactly, exactly.
Is this the biggest jump in any grade?
This is from talking with the high school and Tricia Blackstock, who's been in charge of guidance. This, this has been, I think, the biggest grade in the sense of a lot of the Newburyport families coming back. So this right now is our biggest grade in the high school. So that's why in the future, it's that Catch 22, that this is wonderful, that Newburyport families, you know, want to come back to the high school. And then next year, if we get that same bump. we get that same bump, then we're gonna start looking down the road. You know, if we have classes back-to-back where you're over two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five, then you start looking at class space and class sizes. So I think that's something that, you know, that we wanna monitor. But right now, I think, you know, we're pleased of, Newburyport families, you know, wanting to come back and experience high school.
And I think we had, you know, we've opened choice for a couple of years in a row. That word finally, you know, it starts to spread. We have five international students. We took some opportunities to expand our, our population a little bit too.
When do we normally start talking about choice in the next year, March?
Usually, usually around budget season, we start looking at, I would say, it's usually on the, from January to March where we look at staffing and the different grade levels and depends on the, you know, once again, the budget.
I have a question. I'm anonymous, because I know you talked about it before. So do we still have two kids on the waiting list?
We have three.
Three kids on the waiting list?
Correct.
Is there still a possibility we will take those kids or are you still trying?
No, I, I think from talking to, you know, Mr. Wolf and Trish, right now, we're gonna keep them on the waiting list unless, you know, we have someone move out or it's just that, that class is a, is a big class. So.
How long does the waiting list remain open? Like midway through the year?
No, I, I wouldn't know if it. I don't think it's mid-year. I think it's just the beginning.
No, but.
You know, the next few weeks, you monitor those numbers and then if, for whatever reason, if, you know, those numbers go down, a couple of slots open, then we'll call those families. So some of those families, once they start at another school, they may stay there, but we stay in touch with them, cause if, you know, you know, if they say Mr. Gallagher or to us, you know, if something does open up in the next few weeks, let us know and we'll, we'll come back. So we're in contact with those families.
Before we go to, are there any, actually, are there any subcommittee reports?
No, but we're policy meets sixteen.
Sixteen.
And finance, ten is scheduled for the seventeenth, eight fifteen a.m.
What?
Tentatively. Kidding me?
With Brian's approval.
Eight fifteen, normal.
Good. Before we, before we adjourn to our executive session, I want Dave and Chung sent an email about the retreat topics and I just wanted to give you guys an update on what we're covering. The, the idea about how we're conducting our meetings, I have added continued discussion. We're gonna add that to the agenda of the second meeting in September. We will continue our discussion about that. The charter review, we can continue to have the discussion, but again, this is a, this is a review process and not a revision process. This is not a rewrite of the charter. It is a review process. So there's not gonna be, I think, significant changes. But from talking with Charlie Tontar, who's gonna be chairing it, what will probably get built into the process is, is a review every ten years and every twenty years, a rewrite, a complete revision of the charter. So at least it'll be put into the charter that we do that. All right? We can continue to discuss.
So I mean, so what if you, everything you review, you wanna change? You're not gonna change it even though you're reviewing it?
City council, any changes go through the city council. They don't go through the community.
Oh, so it can be changed.
Okay. So we can still recommend all the changes that we recommended.
There can be some changes, right. There can be changes, but I don't think there, you know, there are some things that you can't, Charlie was telling me, and I don't know, Steve, you might be able to, that, what are the things that can't be changed?
I'm not sure, but generally, I think your, your branches can't be changed, but there's other things that can be. But your, your basic legislative, school committee, executive, mayoral, I don't believe those can be changed.
Right. I'm not sure that they can be by statute, not by, not by disinterest.
But something like the example that Dave talked about, how we can't interview for a job in the city until we've been off for a year.
You know, it's, it's kind of ironic, because I, I was on the charter commission and actually I submitted a minority report, did not support the charter on that, on that exact issue about whether or not people could be employed in the city.
But can something like that be changed or is that considered a much larger issue?
That just reflects the school committee, right? That's not even a.
No, no, it's both the city council and the school committee can't.
I don't think the council has the same restriction.
Yeah, it does.
They do?
Yep. I read it in the charter. Same, same exact, same exact language, same exact restriction.
Not how it was described to us last time around. Just.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, by me?
No, by city hall.
Okay, yeah, no, they have the exact same language.
You guys remember?
This, so there's, in, in the state, in the state statutes, there is language where you can be, become a special employee. And so there is a way to get that done. It's just more complicated and has to get voted on by the city council, but it's called a special employee. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of provisions that can be overridden, if you will.
But in this review process, is something like that able to be changed with a vote just by the city council? If your review team says, hey, we wanna get rid of that, will that ever go to city council for a vote or they say, okay, we'll see you in ten years?
I don't have an answer to that question. It would have to go to the city council if that recommendation's made. I'm not chairing it. Charlie Tontar is. And if the group hasn't met, we'll probably meet at the end of September.
Do you, do you remember back, like, why that was put in? Like, what was the conversation around that? Was that pulled from like another charter? You saw that, another.
Nepotism or something, I thought.
Yeah, there was, the issue was conflict of interest and that you might end up, somebody serving on the city council who's also an employee, might end up recusing themselves from half the work that they'd have to do on the city council. It was one of the issues. What were some of the other issues?
Well, I think there's arguments on, on both sides of the issue, but, you know, the other issue is, is related to that is the cost, what the cost would be if you have to, if all of a sudden you can't rely on elected officials to make a decision, if you need to hire an attorney to get an opinion, the cost, you know, three hundred, four hundred dollars an hour. And then there's just, there's also the, I remember the argument, the impression of, say, you had a police officer running for city council, the police officer walking up to your door with a sign to put on your front lawn. What, what is that like? So there's arguments on both sides, but I can tell you from, having worked in some consultant support with the Fall River Charter Commission, they, they had a similar situation where they were, I believe they were, it was a fireman running for school committee and we've had firemen serve on his school committee, actually. And so there was a lot of controversy about whether they should vote him, because the charter hadn't been brought in, charter hadn't been voted yet, but there was a gentleman, firefighter, who was running for school committee.
One of the things I think that in preparation for the conversations, we can go back and look at the minutes of the conversation that we had about that, but my recollection is that the, I was the only person voting in favor of it.
And I know we don't wanna keep talking about this, but those two examples are the opposite of what we're talking about. We're talking about someone who's elected.
And then taking a job.
Going to vote, interview for a job and then presumably leaving that elected position if they got the gig. You're not gonna be able to.
My thing, you shouldn't be able to do both, but like, I think, you shouldn't recruit somebody for going for a job in the city.
Right. Can the school committee member become a fireman in the city? Or do they have to wait a year? And that's, that's really the question we're asking.
Right. I mean, the way it's written.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that is worth discussing.
It seems, it would seem silly to me to have to wait a year before applying to the fire department just because you run the school committee.
I mean, my clearest understanding of that is a school committee member can't be employed by the school district. In terms of either positions.
It says by the city.
I believe you can. I believe you can. I believe there's a way to do it.
So a review thing may come up and reward that.
Special employee, whatever. I believe there's a way to do it.
So are we gonna talk about that here or are we, are you suggesting?
We can't, we can't talk about it. And, and what I will do is, is make sure that it's on the agenda of the charter review commission, which would be a posted meeting, the agenda would be posted and everybody will know when the discussion is, then people can participate in that discussion. That, that would be the way to do it.
I mean, because truth and my bigger concern is the, the term of election, because we're now, we're now at like the third or fourth election cycle in a row where people are running uncontested. So I think we are not generating.
It's not the third or fourth. No, because I've run, every time I've run, I've run in a contested election. So the election prior to the one.
Well, this was the second.
I ran four years ago and I've been now twice uncontested.
Right.
You are now uncontested. If you ran four years ago, which it sounds like when I came on.
Contested, contested election.
I came in.
Every election I've.
Oh, yeah. Cause that was.
Have a, a fourth person running at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, so.
I'm just saying, we don't seem to be generating a lot of interest.
But the interest we generate is good.
Bring it to the commission. Bring it to the commission to have a discussion. I mean, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think the best thing to do is get it on the agenda and then come offer comment.
Right. I don't, what I, what I don't really think is, is appropriate is for us to have a discussion, take a vote and then expect me to take this vote that we took on a, on a topic to the charter commission. I just don't think that that's appropriate for a school committee to do. It wouldn't be appropriate for the city council to be passing resolutions and handing them off to the charter committee, saying, this is what we want. I think that we need to talk about it and I think that there is.
We should talk about it at the, at the charter commission.
Okay. That's fine.
Mr. Menon?
Yep.
Before you discuss charter review, what was the other thing that you said on how we conduct our meetings first?
Um, yeah, how we, that I'm going to add it as a discussion topic to the agenda of our next school committee meeting. And there've been a number of conversations about, about curriculum and about school committee involvement and having conversations. And what I'm gonna recommend is Sean made a request to us last year to establish a curriculum and student life committee. I'm gonna ask him to formalize that a little bit, write it down, and we'll, we'll have that discussion in October about how we're gonna proceed with that. That's what I've got at this point. Any questions? We need a motion.
Goals. We need our goals.
Can I respond to, communication? No, I don't, I don't think, we can, I'm just trying to see what I.
Sean, are you guys close to solidifying district goals for this year?
Yes.
Okay, so once we have those, maybe we can figure out what school committee's role might be in working on those ideas.
Yeah, I think that's great. I need a motion to go to executive session to discuss.
So moved.
Ask me and IA contracts and other contracts not to reconvene in open session. Have we have to vote in second? Do we have second?
Second.
Do we have individual, vote individually? Nancy Lysick is gonna be here to participate in part of this executive session.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hochheimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzer?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Okay. Great. Can be in this door?
Are you coming back?
We're not coming back into session.
Bye.